It is six thirty PM and I call this meeting to order. Please stand and we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Winona City Council and is being held via conference call pursuant to Minnesota statutes thirteen D point zero two one in response to the COVID nineteen emergency. Let me please remind those who are on the conference call line, please mute your phones until you're asked to speak. Also, please identify yourself before you speak. As required by the statute, all votes will be conducted by roll call, so each member's vote on each issue can be can be identified and recorded. Also, if at any time a council member is not able to hear the discussion or one another, please interrupt immediately to indicate so. Also, just a reminder to state your name before you speak, so you're easily identified. Tonight, I've got a couple announcements. The city of Winona is proud to recognize the achievement of two seniors from Cotter High School. Both were awarded the title of state champion at the Class A Minnesota State High School League Speech Tournament on April twenty fourth. Congratulations to Aubrey Williams, daughter of Tom and Linda, for her performance in the category of great speeches. And congratulations to Grace Miller, daughter of Casey and Chris, for her performance in the category of informative speaking. The city of Winona is proud to recognize the exceptional speaking abilities of these state champions. I'd also like to announce that May is Bike Month, and you can go to the city of Winona website. If you do a search for parks and trail real resources, you will find a whole bunch of stuff, everything from maps to routes, local organizations and helpful links. You can also find similar information at the visitWinona.com site, and you can search for biking. That's all I have for this evening. City manager Steve Sarbi.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to let the council and the community know that we have promoted Nick Larson to Development Coordinator. He had been in the interim position, but he has finally moved forward and taken the job on full time. So congratulations to Nick.
I will now ask the city clerk to take roll call. Members of the city council who are either present in the council chambers or participating by conference call, please indicate your presence by stating here as the city clerk calls your name.
Mayor Scott Sherman.
Here.
Councilman Steve Young.
Here.
Eileen Moller.
Here.
Michelle Alexander.
Here.
Pam Idon. George Borzakowski.
Here.
Aaron Rapinski.
Here. Reminder that the public is not allowed to speak during these agenda items unless you have a request before the council, and I have given you permission to speak. Also, a reminder to the council that a roll call vote will be taken on each motion.
Under the petition's request and communications, item three point one is a request for use of Levy Park by Winona County.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Move approval of that request.
Eileen will second.
We have a motion by Michelle and a second by Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Idon is absent. Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye. Motion passes.
Item three point two is a request from the Army ROTC from UW La Crosse for an event on May fifteenth.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Move approval of that request.
Steve Young will second.
We have a motion by Michelle and a second by Steve. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye. Motion passes.
Item three point three is the two thousand and twenty one Steamboat Days Agreement.
George to adopt the attached resolution.
I'm Michelle Alexander will second.
We have a motion by George and a second by Michelle. Any discussion?
Mayor Michelle Alexander.
Go ahead, Michelle.
Thank you. I just want to say how excited I am that we will have Steamboat Days back because it signals to me that we're going to have activities this summer, and it looks like we have a fairly rich program coming, and I've been getting comments from people all over the city asking about the car show and the parade, and everyone's kind of ready for it. So I'm glad we're we're going to have it this year. Thanks to everyone for working hard to find a way to make it happen.
Thank you, Michelle. Any other discussion?
Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
Does Monica or any of the Steamboat Days committee members that would be listening in, do they want to share any information with us?
Yeah, George, this is Maynard right now, Maynard Johnson. I am actually the president this year. I've also got Jeremy Graves with me as vice president. So one, we want to say a couple things, and that is, one, Mayor, City Manager and City Council members, we appreciate your help and support over the past few years of all the city departments, or many of them, and know that that will will go on. We also want to make a special thanks to Fire Chief Kurt Biddle, Chad Hubel from the Park and Rec Department and Assistant City Manager, and Monica Mohan from the City Clerk. They've been real instrumental in helping us through the COVID parts of this, and I just want to clarify a little bit, and that is, I want you to take a look at two different areas. There's an Exhibit A, and those are the things that we've shown that we can do safely or feel we can do safely, and we've gotten that approval tentatively through the Fire Chief and all the COVID guidelines, and there's a big thick packet. However, there's a group of B, if you take a look at that on your next page, those are things that currently we aren't allowed to have still, and hope that that will come into play in the next few weeks so that we could host those events, but currently we can't have those particular events because of the COVID guidelines. Hopefully, things open up, and then we can take a look at that. With that, at the same time, I want to say this will be our seventy-fourth anniversary of Steamboat Days, so next year will be our seventy-fifth. So we hope to be able to bring everything back next year and come even bigger and better. I know we, all the committee and whatnot, has been working hard. We have twenty-two on our on our on our volunteer committee board, and we've all been working hard to try to be as safe as possible to put on this two thousand twenty-one event. So I guess with that, we hope everybody will come to Steamboat Days and enjoy the best they can. Thanks a lot, and thanks for everybody for their support and help, and the community as well. Buttons will be on sale shortly.
Awesome.
If you approve this.
Great. Thank you, Maynard. I think everybody appreciates the hard work that everybody's put in. Monica, did you have anything else to add to that? Okay, very good. Thanks again. Appreciate it.
Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
As Maynard's thanking us, I think we owe a very big thank you to Maynard and Jeremy, Monica, everyone involved in it, everyone involved. Thanks again for putting your time into this. This isn't like a one, one or two night meetings. This is yearly meetings and job well done, and thank you from all of us.
Very good. Thanks, George. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Abstain. Motion passes.
Item three point four, the licenses for the two thousand twenty-one Steamboat Days Festival.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Move approval of those license agreements.
Eileen will second.
We have a motion from Michelle and a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Abstain. Motion passes.
Item three point five is a request for off-site gambling permit for the Winona Eagles Club to be used at Steamboat Days.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Move approval of that request.
Eileen will second.
We have a motion from Michelle and a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye. Motion passes.
Item three point six is a request for the dine-out downtown street closure by the Winona Main Street Program.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Move approval of that request.
George will second that.
We have a motion by Michelle, a second by Eileen. Any discussion?
Mayor Michelle Alexander.
Go ahead, Michelle.
I just want to say I did get a few comments about this. People didn't understand why because they want to get back to normal, but I don't see this as just a a COVID thing. I see it as a way to bring the community together for activities and events in the downtown, which is the Main Street's directive. So I'm happy to see that they came up with a solution during a pandemic, but found a way to continue it into the future, hopefully, to provide some type of entertainment on weekends in downtown for businesses and community members.
Thank you, Michelle. City manager, do you have something to say?
Yes, Mayor. We also working with Main Street, we pulled the the event in, so it's not spread out, I think, over three blocks like it was last year. So we'll, hopefully, it'll grow. That's fine, but we'll start out a little bit smaller for twenty-one.
Very good. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
What are the blocks that this is going to cover? Do we know right offhand, or does Steve know?
Mayor and council, it's center to Walnut on on Third.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye. Motion passes.
Item three point seven is a resolution from the Human Rights Commission regarding the General Assistance Center.
I'm Michelle Alexander. I make a motion to deny that request.
Steve Young will second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Steve. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Go ahead, Steve.
The Human Rights Commission does good work. I appreciate what they do. They're an asset to our to our community, but on this item, they've they've lost their way. It's not, I don't believe it's appropriate for for us and this council to take a position that on on something that, it's a question that isn't even being asked, something that we're not responsible for. An analogy would be like if this council were to take a position on the the curriculum that our school board is advocating for. That would be inappropriate as well, and so this this request should be denied.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
Yeah, I think, you know, this is certainly a position that the county commissioners could take. They will be making that decision. I don't feel one elected board to another elected board should be telling those people what type of a stance they should take. We're all elected by the people, the county board, as we are, and Steve and Marcia and Chris and Greg and Marie, they will make the right decision. I'm very confident of that.
Thank you, George. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Nay. Or am I voting nay?
So the motion is to deny.
Okay.
The request.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
No.
Alexander.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye. Motion denied.
That motion carried.
Motion carries. Okay. Did I gamble it again? Motion carries.
Under new business, item five point one is the airport FBO lease fees.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Would make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Eileen will second.
We have a motion by Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye. Motion passes.
Item five point two is the approval of the Airport Coronavirus Response Grant Program.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Eileen will second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye. Motion passes.
Item five point three is a Veterans Memorial Maintenance Agreement.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Make a motion to execute the agreement, or I can second George. Okay.
George will second that.
Okay. Michelle made the motion. George will second. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor George here. I'd just like to say that I think Jim May and his group are doing a very, very good job of maintaining that Veterans Memorial Park. I know what was quite a contentious issue here a few a few years back, but they're doing a very, very good job, and the park is a thing of beauty, so thank you.
Thank you, George. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye. Motion passes.
Item five point four is to ward the bid for the transit shelters. I did email to you the bid tab, and the low bidder is second shift repair with a bid of seventy-nine thousand eight hundred sixty-one dollars and thirty cents.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Make a motion to ward the bid to second fit. Is that correct?
Shift.
Shift. Second fifth shift.
I, Erin, will second that.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Erin. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Mayor, go ahead, Eileen.
Oh, thank you. I'm, I just wanted to mention that I'm very happy that we're continuing to move forward with this. We very much need those shelters, and I am so excited for them to come into existence. So thanks, Monica, and everyone who is working on this.
Thank you, Eileen. George?
Yes. What do we know about this second shift repair? I have never seen a bid from them before, and I'll have to say, by looking at the bids, the separation between second shift repair and Wapishaw, seventy-four dollars and twenty cents. I don't think I ever seen a bid that close.
Mayor and council, I don't recall a bid that close, but second shift repair is a local contractor. It's a garage oats on County Road twelve. They've done some repair work for the third-party contractor for the buses, so they are doing a lot of the work on our transit buses. They do some insurance repairs for various people, and they also do some general contract construction.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye. Motion passes.
Item five point five is the agreement with Winona Area Public Schools for three bus shelters.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Move approval of that agreement.
George will second that.
We have a motion by Michelle, a second by George. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye. Motion passes.
Item five point six is the limited use permit for a bus shelter on State Highway right-of-way.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Make a motion to approve that limited use permit.
Eileen will second.
We have a motion by Michelle, a second by Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye. Motion passes.
Item five point seven is the International Association Association of Firefighters, Fire Captains, twenty-one through twenty-two Memorandum of Agreement.
George moves to approve the attached resolution.
Michelle Alexander seconds.
We have a motion by George, a second from Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye. Motion passes.
Item five point eight is the Winona Senior Advocacy, Winona County, twenty-two budget request.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Move approval of that budget request.
Eileen.
Or not the resolution.
We have a motion from Michelle and a second by Eileen, and we have a presentation by Lori Paulson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Lori Paulson. I'm a senior advocate with the Winona Senior Advocacy Program, which is housed at the Winona Friendship Center. So I'm here tonight to give you an advocacy one oh one. So I'd like to start with our mission statement, which you can see on the screen, which is to assist older adults of Winona County to remain independent in their own home. Next slide. This slide shows an organizational chart representing Winona Senior Advocacy. As you can see, the Friendship Center is our facility for ages fifty-five and above, and it's part of the Park Rec Department. And there are two advocates, Marita Olmstead and myself. Next slide, please. This slide shows our advocacy budget and our funding sources. So you can see that SEMA, which is the Southeastern Area Agency on Aging, provides us with twenty-five thousand, and that is coming from the Older American Act dollars, Title Three B. We also receive some private donations from our people that come visit us at advocacy, our clients, and then the city of Winona makes up the rest of the budget. Next slide, please. So this is who we serve. There are no no fees to use senior advocacy. You do not need to have a Friendship Center membership. We typically serve sixty and above. We also serve older adults with disabilities. We serve both city of Winona and county residents. People will self-refer to us, or we get referrals from Winona County Human Services. Next slide. So this is what we do. We do a lot of forms assistance, as you can see the list of forms that we typically help with. We do a lot of Medicare counseling, both people that are aging into Medicare and during open enrollment, which is every fall. We have three notaries at the Friendship Center. We do healthcare directives. Chore Core is a new program with the Friendship Center, so that's our lawn mowing, snow removal. Thanks to the city manager, we are always working towards becoming a Winona dementia-friendly community, and that's housed out of the Friendship Center and advocacy. We do information and referral for all topics. If we don't know it, we'll find someone that does, and the assistance in helping a client remain living independently in their home. Next slide, please. So this slide depicts what we do in regard to Winona County Human Services. So SNAP, which is the food assistance, medical assistance for long-term care, so that's services in your home, services at assisted living or long-term care facilities, medical assistance for employed persons with disabilities, the Medicare Savings Program, Minnesota Supplemental Aid, MinSure, which is part of the Affordable Care Act here in Minnesota, and also Adult Protective Services, vulnerable adult check-ins. So, and just some more information on that slide about what MinSure does and what a Medicare Savings Program does, which it will pay your Part B, as in boy premium, which amounts to a hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty cents a month, so it's significant. The beauty of advocacy is that we assist people on all socio-economic levels, from food assistance for those that are poor to Medicare Part D referral and analysis for someone with a more lucrative income. Next slide, please. The next three slides, I will depict to you what it looks like when we work with a client. In this instance, the husband is in Winona, and the wife is in a skilled nursing facility. They have met the amount that they need to spend. He is a community spouse, and so she needs to go into long-term care, and they're applying for medical assistance to help pay for that skilled nursing facility. So the wife has been approved for medical assistance by Winona County, and the county is working with the husband. So per the county, the husband calls at the advocate for help in choosing a medical assistance health plan for the wife. So the husband and the advocate meet at our office. The advocate reviews the medication list, reviews the providers that the wife sees, and then we kind of look at it and say, can the wife go on a standalone drug plan, or can she go on a M-Show, which is Minnesota Senior Health Options? It's confusing, but we can ask questions later if you need to. So based on the information that we go over with the husband, he decides to choose a Blue Cross Blue Shield M-Show plan for the wife. The advocate assists the the husband with the enrollment form, and then the husband returns the form to the county. Next slide, please. So this is a, an advocacy client. The monthly income for this client is less than one thousand dollars gross a month. The situation is, is the client is having trouble paying for her bills, and she has come to advocacy to help troubleshoot that. The client has medical assistance with Winona County, but not a Medicare Savings Program. Remember that program that will pay her Part B premium, giving her an extra one hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty cents a month. So the advocate meets with the client who already has medical assistance without a spend down. The advocate assists the client with the Medicare Savings Program application after finding out that the client wasn't on that program. So we do like an analysis of everyone, like a screening, to see if they are eligible for programs. The advocate talks with the client about their current coverage because they're visiting out of network providers, which is costing them more money. So the advocate informs the client about other plan options. The client will then think about switching plans and let the advocate know if they need additional assistance. Next slide, please. This client, too, is known to advocacy, and her monthly income is less than a thousand dollars. So the situation is, the client has case management with Winona County. Upon request from her home healthcare worker, the client loans a large amount of money to this woman. The case manager files a vulnerable adult report. Adult Protective Services contacts the home healthcare worker about the loaned money. The client is getting calls from the home care worker, and the advocate contacts Adult Protective Services. So the client visits the person because she received a phone message from the home care worker. Advocate contacted Adult Protective Services about the phone message. The advocate goes to the client's house again to listen to a second phone message from the home care worker. Advocate meets with Adult Protective Services, and per Smurls, which is Southern Minnesota Regional Legal Services, suggests a promissory note. suggests a promissory note between the client and the healthcare worker. The client hasn't received any money from the healthcare worker. Adult Protective Services contacts the home care worker again about that promissory note, and then that home care worker agrees to a monthly repayment. And the advocate continues to follow up with the client. So the third example, the one that we just went through, shows what we do because we already have a contract with Winona County to be part of the vulnerable adult reporting in Winona County. So when a person is deemed not to be vulnerable, and senior advocacy could be valuable, they will refer that client to us for follow-up. This ends my presentation. As you can see, advocacy provides help to many citizens of our city and county. When an opportunity presents itself, please spread the word and provide a referral to Winona Senior Advocacy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Chad, did you have something to say?
Mayor and Council, I'd just like to add, obviously Lori did a great job presenting the services that the advocacy program provides. These are weighty topics. This is serious stuff. You know, Lori certainly mentioned that the complexity of the services they provide and the complexity of some of the programs that are out there for our older adults. And that's tough to wade through if you're the client, much less if you're two advocates. Really, I guess what I'd like to stress tonight, or why we're here in front of council, is that each year we do ask for an allocation from Winona County to assist in this program. And just short of a mandate, we feel that the services that we provide and continue to provide, and those types of services continue to increase, we have not seen a financial allocation increase with those services from Winona County. We have been receiving approximately twenty-nine thousand, and then twenty-nine thousand five hundred since two thousand eight. We think that, we thought coming to council tonight would be a good idea to inform the council of not only the project, but that this is a twenty-twenty-two budget issue. You can see from one of Lori's first slides that the program costs approximately a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars per year, and the county's paying twenty-nine thousand of that. And that what we're asking for is a little bit more of a financial assistance from Winona County. Again, because of the increased services that continue to come from Winona County to the advocates and those in the community that self-select to the program as well. That was really the intent tonight. We don't typically bring this budget form to council in the past, but quite frankly, because of the increased services and certainly the need in the community, we thought it was appropriate to bring it forward tonight because our request ultimately to Winona County for twenty-twenty-two will be fifty thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Very good. Thanks, Chad. Any discussion? Go ahead, Steve.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, Lori, thank you very much for what you brought to us. I want you to know, I run a small business, I have four employees. We've talked about your organization. We've, we make referrals to your organization.
Good, thank you.
We, the clientele I work with tends to skew older, and so we're sometimes one of the early people that hear about these problems or crises as they're becoming a crisis, and so we've made multiple referrals to you. So I just want to say you're on our phone list, and we appreciate what you do.
Great, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
If I understand correctly now, and as what Chad said now, this advocacy is throughout Winona County, right?
Mayor and Council, that's correct.
Okay, so St. Charles, Lewiston, they're all involved in this.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, George.
Mayor, Michelle Alexander.
Go ahead, Michelle.
I just want to thank you, Lori, for the presentation, and I have a couple of questions for you or Chad, whoever feels most comfortable answering them. What is the ratio of county to city participants in the program? Do we know?
Mayor and Council, Malia and Lori have provided me that information. Since I have it in front of me, I'll give it to you, but certainly they know this much better than I do. But in twenty, from November of twenty eighteen to October twenty nineteen, we had unduplicated clients served was fourteen hundred roughly, and about four hundred roughly were from the rural area. In twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, we had just shy of two thousand unduplicated clients served, and four hundred and fifty were from the rural area. Again, twenty twenty is anomaly, and again, we don't, it's certainly a serious issue. We can discuss that a different time, but the numbers, of course, are askew because of COVID as well. But the number of clients served from twenty twenty to October, or up to date, is eight hundred and thirty-five, and two hundred and eight were rural. So Mayor and Council, that basically, I read those quick, but what that equates to be is anywhere between twenty-four, twenty-five, or twenty-six percent of the population that we serve comes from the rural area.
Okay, and I have a couple of follow-up questions, if I may. What happens if this program doesn't exist for county employees? Where would they send their employee, where would they send their, their community members? I mean, do they have a service that they provide apart from this for similar services to their population?
I believe Malia would like to answer that.
Please.
Michelle, can you hear me?
I can.
This is Malia. And so the question would be, there is something called a senior linkage line. It's a eight-hundred number throughout the state. They can call to the linkage line. However, the issue is all of these forms that are generated from the county that the advocates are assisting people to fill out. From what we can gather, and I know during COVID, I actually received a call from a man standing in the county building. There was no one there that would help him fill out the forms. And so it was like March of twenty twenty, and we were all, you know, at home, and we were getting to the point that somebody was going to go down and help him, but he was able to call a neighbor and get the neighbor to come and do it. So from what we can gather, they are not helping assisting anyone with their forms. So I don't know if I've really answered your question.
You did. No, you did. I think what the answer is, is they use this program to cover those services for the county, and they are spending twenty-nine thousand dollars, which is a savings for them because if they had staff on board, the cost would be exponentially higher to do the work that you're doing for just the county residents. I mean, this is similar to like library services or any of the park and rec services that we provide for the county employee, I mean, county populations without compensation or what would be considered adequate compensation for the services we're providing to the county from a city tax base. Am I understanding that correctly?
I believe that would be correct.
Okay, so really, if, and I want to be very clear, this is not something I'm advocating for, even going to say, but if for some reason our budget was unable to continue to provide these services to the county residents, we could only do city, this could be detrimental to the population of the county of Winona.
Mayor and Council, Michelle, devastating.
Yeah, okay. That helps. Those are the questions I had. I just, I was making the assumption in my head that the county didn't have this position filled beyond our city advocates, and I don't think people realize that the compensation that the, the city receives for those services are not in line with the amount of work and the valuable resource that that, I mean, I think life-saving resource that that provides for our, our older adults, which is unfortunate. So that's, I just wanted to make that statement.
Thank you, Michelle.
Mayor and Council, again, I used the word devastating. We showed you three examples tonight. And again, look at the number of clients we serve throughout the county. It's close to two thousand or two thousand plus. We gave you three examples. So I guess I concurred with the word devastating because certainly it would be a, you know, a social impact, certainly a mental health impact. So community impact would certainly be felt if this service wasn't provided.
Thank you, Chad.
Mayor, if I could make one other comment, just as a statistic, ninety-five percent of the older adult population lives in the community. They reside in the community. There are only five percent of the older adult population living in assisted living and long-term care. I have two advocates for the rest, ninety-five percent of the older adult community living. You know, there are family members that will assist people, but it, it's a large amount of people. So I just want you to understand that statistic as well.
Sure. Thank you, Malia. Any other discussion?
Mayor George here with a question.
Go ahead, George.
Malia or Chad or Ms. Paulson. Now, this is not a twenty-four-hour service, is it?
It is not.
Okay, just okay.
I mean, our hours of operation are Monday through Friday. I'm, I hope advocates aren't taking calls at the middle of the night. No, they wait until morning to get their.
Or Saturday or Sunday.
Not really, no.
Okay, all right, that's good. Very good info tonight from everyone.
Thank you, George. City manager?
Again, I just want to reiterate the great work that's being done at the Friendship Center, certainly by the advocates as well. If you can imagine some very serious life events happening, and you're at an age where, you know, it's tough enough to deal with all the paperwork when you're younger, but you get handed a stack of forms and say, fill these out and turn them back. It's a recipe for people to just throw that stuff in the recycling bin, and then you really don't get the assistance. And of course, the last thing I would say is, last time I checked, we're all residents of this county as well. And so assistance from the county, you know, this dividing between the city and the rest of the county, really, I think we should consider this as though we're all in this together, which we are. These are, these are much-needed services for anybody in the county, and I'm glad that we can provide them. But it is getting to the point where we may have to make some tough decisions just from a budgetary standpoint.
Well said. Thank you, Steve. Any other comments or discussion?
Yeah, Mayor George here, just with a final.
Go, George.
I think this is kind of a call out tonight even for more families to get involved with, you know, aging parents and things. And I think it's a good call out that we keep an eye on all these people. So as someday, we are hoping that they will be keeping an eye on us. So, thank you.
Agreed. Thank you, George. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item seven point one is council concerns.
Tonight, we'll start with Councilmember Borzakowski.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Steve Sarvi, could you just give us a quick update as to where we are with this ART response team we're supposed to have coming on board? Where is that right now?
Mayor and Council, right now, we're going between attorneys to finalize the contract. Once the contract is finalized, we'll bring that back to the council for approval. And then the next step after that would be to develop sort of the work plan and for them to, for Hiawatha Valley to hire the, the two coordinators.
Do you have a timeline when, when we would like to have these people on board?
Mayor and Council, I would, I would hope to have them operating by July. Sooner, obviously, would be better, but there's still a few things we need to work out.
Okay, all right, thank you. And again, I would just simply like to congratulate, congratulate Nick Larson on his promotion. Nick will do a very, very good job in that role and have worked with him for the past several years, and he's very dedicated and will do a very, very good job. And of course, he has big shoes to fill, but I'm quite certain he'll be able to do that. And then on a sad note, I would just like to pass on condolences to the, to the Paul Double family on the passing of his wife, Norma. Paul, who served on the council with us for one term a few years back there, and a very good councilman at large he served. And also to the Call family on the passing of mother and grandmother Jenny Call. Jenny, who lived quite, quite a few years, I believe, age ninety-three. And she was always out for a pull tab and just a good time and a good visit. And she is, or she was the wife of former Councilman Doc Call, as we know him by the Jim Call, the second ward seat, which Eileen Holtz does. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you, George. Councilmember Alexander.
Thank you. First, I want to congratulate our very own city clerk, Monica. She was recently elected to serve as treasurer of the City Clerks Association of Minnesota. I'm not getting the names right, sorry, Monica, which means that for the next four years, she's committed to being on that leadership team. She's an astounding city clerk. We're very lucky to have her here, and they couldn't find a better person to serve. So congratulations, Monica. And then we finally received from our sister city in Poland, Bitoff, a beautiful window that they created as part of the KCC twenty twenty year-long celebration, which unfortunately did not happen in twenty twenty. However, the committee is right now working on a modified KCC twenty twenty-one. We will be bringing some of the best programming portions to the community in the second half of the year. So watch for that, it'll be out. Posters will be going up, media will be going out. We are working with our very own Erin Rapinski on some riverboat tours. We're going to have our March of the Pomeranians and Pet Parade and a furball. We're going to have Schmingus Dingus Water Fun Day for kids in the park. We'll have our Yeni Kohani Poker Fest and Donut Eating Contest with Play-Doh. So it's all coming. It's going to happen in the second half of the year. Everything being equal, we'll make those things happen, so watch for it. But hopefully, we'll be able to get a picture of this gorgeous window out to everyone so they can see the beautiful gift that Bitoff and one of their largest employers drew text created for our city to, to present and keep in our community. I'm, I don't think we've decided where it's going to go yet, but everyone should take a look at it if they get a chance. Thanks.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, Pam's gone tonight, so we'll go with Councilwoman Moller.
Thank you, I just wanted to echo congratulations to Nick Larson. We're very fortunate to have him here, and yeah, he's, he's a wonderful person and does a lot of good for the community. So congratulations, Nick, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Eileen. Councilmember Young.
I bring to you a quick railroad update. The TCMC, the Second Daily Amtrak Train, that hopefully will be chugging between St. Paul and Chicago daily. We don't, we're really close on this. The governor is on board, the House is on board, waiting for the Senate. The reason I'm bringing it up now is I've received some questions on this, so I wanted to publicly say, and, and those of you who are here and listening online can clear up any misconceptions. I've been asked several times if there's going to be demolition, demolition of houses. No, 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 nothing of the sort. This is on existing grade, it's on existing track, it's switching equipment. It is extending a little bit of siding on existing rail, rail dirt, rail gravel and grade. So no alarm bells. But just wanted to let you know where we feel we should learn the, of this passage in the next few weeks. So we're excited.
Awesome. Thank you, Steve. Councilmember Rapinski.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, after you commented earlier on the Catter speech team, I'd like to just publicly congratulate Coach Amy French and Bob French on a very successful twenty twenty-one speech team and their successfulness with their state championship. So congratulations, Catter Speech.
Absolutely. Thanks, Erin.
Under the consent agenda, there are five items. Approval of the minutes from April nineteenth, the final adoption of an ordinance to amend the truck routes to include Ben Street, an ordinance to amend the city right-of-way ordinance, an ordinance to amend the tree code, and a claim by. and a claim by the city for damages to a police squad.
I, Michelle Alexander, move approval of the consent agenda.
All right, Erin will second that. We have a motion by Michelle, a second from Erin. We'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I, Michelle Alexander, move we adjourn.
Steve Young goes second.
Very good.
We have a motion by Michelle, a second by Steve. We'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, thank you.